For the use of space in Elizabeth Hager Center.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for approval of a resolution authorizing a rental contract between the National Institute of Standards and Technology, NIST, and the City of Hagerstown. The rental contract will allow NIST to utilize designated space in the Elizabeth Hager Center, fourteen North Potomac Street, for emergency drills and when an actual emergency prevents NIST from operating at their headquarters in Gaithersburg, Maryland. The agreement expires on September thirty, twenty twenty-one, and it includes renewal options to extend the contract through twenty twenty-five.
Second.
This question. No favor.
Aye.
She carries. The approval of a purchase City Park Tree Uplights.
Mr. Mayor, consistent with the approved plan for holiday lighting in City Park, I hereby moved to approve Contract Twenty-C PTL Twenty-Seven to ALC Weaver Electric LLC in the amount of forty-five thousand, six hundred and one dollars and fifty cents to install conductors and uplights. I further authorize up to twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents for city staff to purchase and install conduit and handboxes and related items.
Second.
This question.
Is this going to be ready for this year?
Yeah, that's the plan.
Anybody else? No favor?
Aye.
She carries. Approval of the sale of pumper nineteen ninety-three KME pumper.
Mr. Mayor, I hereby move for mayor and council approval of the sale of a nineteen ninety-three KME Renegade Pumper for the sum of six thousand, five hundred dollars. The offer to purchase the pumper comes via a broker, sold as is where is. This amount exceeds the projected market value of a pumper of this age and condition. There's a broker fee of five percent for listing and marketing the pumper, three hundred and twenty-five dollars. Hagerstown Fire Department staff agrees this is the best possible offer.
Second.
This question. No favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. So next up is a proclamation for Character Counts. Carol? Appropriate distance apart. All right, the proclamation for Character Counts Week, October eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, whereas the next generation will be stewards of our communities, nation, and world in critical times. And the present and future well-being of our society requires an involved, caring citizenry with good character. Whereas the character of the nation is only as strong as the character of its individual citizens, when the public good is advanced, when people are taught that good character counts with personal relationships, in the workplace, school, and throughout the community. And whereas Character Counts provides a framework of universal values that transcend culture, religious, political, and socioeconomic values through the six pillars of character: trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And whereas these pillars of character can be learned and modeled by the leaders of our community to improve interactions in our society among citizens of all ages, in turn fostering a higher quality of life and enhancing the image of our city. And whereas we count on our partners to help provide strong and constructive guidance for our citizens through Character Counts in our homes, schools, religious institutions, civic groups, places of business, and community gathering places. And whereas the character and conduct of youth reflect the character and conduct of society, therefore, every adult has a responsibility to teach and model the core values, and every social institution has a responsibility to promote the development of good character. Now therefore be resolved the support of the city council, our Robert E. Brucey the Second, Mayor of the City of Hagerstown, Maryland, to hereby proclaim and recognize October eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, to be Character Counts Week, and to urge all city employees to seek out opportunities to incorporate these core principles into their work in parks and recreation activities, childcare programs, community events, and I encourage all citizens, corporate and individual, to model these traits of good character in an ongoing commitment to promote character development and proper behavior throughout our community. This is for you. You want to say a few words?
Just want to thank this city for our ongoing partnership. It's been over twenty-two years that we've been actively involved with Character Counts. And each time I come in, I'll say it's more important now than ever. And again, I'll say it's more important now than ever. This month, we've been talking about, I think it's contractors, construction workers say measure twice and cut once. And with Character Counts, we're saying think twice and speak once. So we just want everybody to remember that what you say has an impact on the other people in the community, the other people around you. So just be kind, and character does count. So thank you.
Eric, want to get your picture out? Twenty twenty, Hagerstown Ice and Sports Complex Annual Report.
The user agreement we have with the Hagerstown Ice Amateur Athletic Association requires that the board members come in in October of every year and give a report on the past year and things that are heading, coming up in the near future. So Paul, Dan, Jesse, I'll get, turn it over to you guys.
Okay. First, I want to thank mayor and city council for your support over the last few years. We've been managing the rank since two thousand and fourteen, and I know the council's on mayorship is going to change probably this coming November, so this is the last time I'm going to see some of you up there. So again, I want to thank each and every one of you for your support over the last few years. Again, we're going to give you a review of what the Ice and Sports Complex has been doing. Dan, you want to handle that part? So as you can see, we have a lot of users that utilize the rank. We have the Kodiaks, the North Stars, which is a high school team, the Hagerstown Adult Hockey League, the Mayhem, which is an all-women's team, figure skaters, youth programs. It's just a great, great organization. And it's all managed by the Hagerstown Ice Amateur Athletic Association. So as you can see up there, HI AAA is a nonprofit, five oh one C three organization. All the user groups are part of HI AAA. We have a representative from each organization on the board. We also have at-large board members that bring some unique skills, accounting skills, building skills, a lot of things that kind of help with things that we need. And again, we were created back in two thousand and fourteen, and we took over operations of the rank April one, and we just finished our sixth fiscal year. Next slide shows public skating revenue. You can see it's been pretty much a steady increase. Last two years have been pretty level. This past year was affected a little bit by COVID nineteen, but our numbers were still a little bit higher than the previous year. Talk about our adult hockey teams. We have several adult leagues. We have an upper-level league that is comprised of six hockey teams. There are ten teams in what we call the Hagerstown Adult Rec League Division. We have an all-female travel team and a sled hockey team. Last year, we had about five hundred and eight adult hockey players registered. Might surprise a lot of people with that number. Youth programs, we have seven youth hockey teams with HYHA. Those are travel teams. They travel, they're part of the Chesapeake Bay Hockey League, which has teams all the ways from, we're probably the westernmost team in Western Maryland, go all the ways to, I think, northern Virginia, actually further down in Virginia. Isn't there some teams from Virginia Beach area too? There's two different high school teams that use the rank, the Washington County North Stars and the West Virginia Vipers. Both participate in different leagues. The North Stars are part of the MSHL, I believe, and West Virginia is part of a West Virginia program. We have four youth development programs. I'm going to say probably five years ago, we hired a hockey director, gentleman by the name of Chad Ziegler, who runs our youth development programs. It's been great. We understand that the more young kids that get involved with hockey, the longer hockey's going to last in our area. So we have power skating programs, which helps improve, people are already skating and even kids that are just learning how to skate. We have a Learn to Play Hockey program, which is tied in with the Washington Capitals. Great program. If you look at the bottom note there, last year, we, Capitals provided fifty complete sets of equipment for kids to use. There was no charge for that equipment. They're allowed to use it. The only charge was to sign up for the program. We have a lot of those players from the Learn to Play Hockey are not quite ready to play in a travel program. So we've created a youth recreational league that plays pretty much every weekend, and that ended up evolving into the Hagerstown Hammerheads, which is an in-house program where they don't travel to, same length that HYHA does, but they play teams in Frederick, and I think, I'm not sure if they go into Virginia or not, but I know probably as far west as Annapolis. But we had over a hundred and eighty-eight youths, kids set up last year. Dan, next line. We have two different figure skating programs. We have the Learn to Skate program and the Figure Skating Club. Last year, three hundred and twenty-nine people registered for Learn to Skate. That's on pace with what we had the year before. This is, we kind of laid out our opportunities for success. I'll just read it. Detailed analysis of separate rank functions continues to be examined by the board members. We meet every month. We have a board meeting scheduled usually the third Thursday of each month. HI AAA, HI AAA board members chair each subcommittee to ensure fair workload and input from each user group and volunteers. The physical state of the ice and the boards is very good condition. We took the ice out during the shutdown back in, that was back in April, wasn't it? And put it back in. Took about two weeks to do that, did some repair work, and the ice is probably never better than it's been. Current state of HI AAA and the Hagerstown Ice and Sports Complex, all bills are current. We've been paying our bills on a regular basis. We have nobody that we really owe money to other than for the Zamboni that we purchased about almost two years ago. We owe, I believe, less than fifty thousand dollars on, that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar purchase. So got it down, it'll probably be paid off in the next couple of years. We did receive several small business loans to keep funding the payroll through the COVID nineteen closure. We qualified for the paycheck protection program, which was very helpful, helped us get through this. We were able to maintain the employees that we had, pretty much, I think we only lost a couple right there. So that was the purpose of that, to carry us through that. And we got also another loan from, I think it's Together We Rise, which is a Washington County program. We opened, reopened the rank in phases, focused on customer and employee safety, consultation with the city and local health officials. We really weren't sure, you know, like everybody else, how this was going to work in the beginning. So we started with the adults, and then we were very careful. It worked well for them, and then we opened it up for the youth programs. And we're pretty much have almost every program opened up now, right?
Yeah, the rent's running at full capacity with all our programs right now.
All right, this tells you about the Zamboni. Next slide is, what we basically do is we, we don't really make money, or if we do have any profit, we kind of try to put it right back into the rank. So we have a bookkeeper, we have several accountants on our, as at-large members on our, on our board. Things are running very, very smoothly, and Dan has been excellent at letting us know what needs to be taken care of and when. We're not reacting like in the past. We're getting ahead of things and making sure that things don't happen unexpectedly. Next slide, you can see where we presented about a month or so ago, the need for putting something called a low E ceiling in the facility. Total cost is about fifty thousand dollars. You graciously approved covering seventy-five percent of that. We're going to cover the other twenty-five percent of that. That process is already started. At some point, we are going to probably need to replace the dehumidification system that we have in the rank currently. There are two dehumidifiers that are twenty-five, twenty-five years old, I guess. They're running all the time, and their life expectancy is not long at this point. So we're going to have to do something with that. The low E ceiling is going to make it a little bit better in the rank, but it's not going to solve the issue. We need to get an updated system, and we're exploring how we're going to get that paid for. Okay, looking ahead, our vision for twenty twenty-one, we're going to continue to operate the rank in a safe environment. We've drafted strategies for potential closure if we see a surge in Maryland or Washington County. The travel and youth, travel, youth, and adult tournaments partnering with local businesses to offer discounts to visitors for restaurants and hotels. And we're also helping to manage the outdoor roller rink at the facility as well. And the last page is what our vision is. We, we, actually, we're all set to go and kick this off about seven or eight months ago, but we want to build a second sheet of ice. We need that. We're pretty much at capacity at this point. Additional ice time will allow more teams and individuals to participate in sports, ice sports at reasonable hours. We have a subcommittee that has met over the last three years to assess the costs and produce recommendations for moving forward. And our rank expansion committee has made progress with fundraising efforts and initial design concepts. So we were all set to kick that off, and this happened. But we'll get it, we'll get it. So with that, that's pretty much our presentation. Any questions? I've got, by the way, with me is Dan Lavalier. He's our general manager, and Jesse Wisniewski is the one that operates our rank website and is also a board member.
I had two questions. First of all, you know, our whole focus right now is on budget and everything. I know you got that hundred and thirty-five K dehumidifier thing we're looking at next year. Is there any way, you know, when teams come in from outside, that we could do like fundraisers or anything to, to help offset that, like building, you know, building a fund or whatever to help offset?
Well, I don't see why not, yeah. The users of our rank, we're not just Hagerstown. We draw, like, for example, my adult team has four players that come from Winchester, Virginia. We pull a lot of players from Martinsburg, a lot of players from Chambersburg. Dan lives in Gettysburg. So there's a lot of outside people that utilize and use the rank. So there, I would definitely be open to trying to figure out a way to kind of help offset.
Yeah, I'm thinking with, with all those people coming in, you know, and they, they don't have the same kind of amenity, and we're, we are really blessed here for our youth programs and everything else. This is really, this is really something that Hagerstown should be proud of, that it's, that it's here. But with all them coming in, you know, given that they want a pristine facility to, to play in, if we could figure out some way to help spread the wealth or spread the cost.
I don't want to kind of say it this way, but I'm going to, I'm going to say it this way. We came to you with the issue because we see it every morning when we come into the rank. A lot of our outside users just come into the rank and they don't see it at all. So even, even when we started the process of the ceiling, they're kind of wondering, why are we doing that, you know? And we're going to have to do a pretty good job of like explaining that process.
We had some good pictures of that big pile of ice, maybe, maybe, you know, in the hallway there, you know, in the, in the break area or something like this. This is what we're dealing with, and please contribute to the dehumidification.
That's a very good idea, actually. We could probably put them in, maybe up in the locker room so that some of the players, because they're, they're used regularly.
And the other question I had was, do you have any metrics on what kind of contribution to local tourism dollars you facilitate by bringing, bringing teams in that are using hotels, using restaurants, maybe going to Dick's to buy a new stick when they break theirs, you know?
Yeah, well, in, in normal times, pretty much every weekend, there are teams that are coming from, the closest rank is Frederick. Most of the teams are coming from further away than that. So they're almost always going out to local restaurants. There are teams that are coming from Virginia, three hours away. I'm sure they're spending the night many times. That's every weekend that's happening, pretty much from, when does HYJ start?
From about August to March.
Yeah. So, and we do have tournaments. Tournaments are generally weekend-long. They'll start on Friday and run through Sunday. So teams are definitely going to be using hotels and restaurants during that time. But to answer your question, I think HYHA, I'll check with them. I could probably get some numbers from them, but I don't, I don't have an exact number.
Yeah, I was wondering if, you know, if we could put, put together the metrics of, you know, how, how much tourism dollars the facility is actually bringing into the area and additional revenue for the town. You know, maybe, maybe you guys deserve some, some of the tourism dollars coming back.
You should hook up with Dan Spedden.
Yeah, Roddy and I were planning on meeting with him, right? And again, that, we had a meeting scheduled, and that's when all this happens. So he could probably give us a better idea number-wise what we're, what we're pulling in.
Great.
Thank you.
Cool. Well, thank you guys very much for your presentation. And as Austin said, it is definitely amenity that is in our community that, that's a shining star for Hagerstown, Maryland. So thank you very much.
So I think Dan would echo it, but I'll just say it's a labor of love.
Yeah.
All depends on the day.
Thank you.
Good to see you guys.
Thank you.
Michelle, you're up.
Good afternoon. I'm here to start conversations on agency contributions. Part of the conversation is going to center around, believe it or not, fiscal year twenty-two budget, because by policy, the agency, general fund agency contribution policy that we adopted a few years ago, it stipulates that every October, finance staff will come and be directed by mayor and council how much total dollars funding to leave in for the initial budget that we bring in the following March. So I did attach a memo, and I'm going to do it a little bit in reverse. If we could, because I think it may be easier, maybe not. But it may be easier to talk about fiscal year twenty-two planning and what you would like to have me do and bring back in March, and then we'll backtrack and talk about current year, fiscal year twenty-one, and what we do this year. And again, because fiscal year twenty-two is by policy. So we have a few options. Again, because we really aren't, I don't have any real new information for you, the financial projection trends for the current year haven't really changed, and honestly, it would be easier at this time to either leave the full amount in to start fiscal year twenty-two budget, or have you say you want me to try to limit it to two hundred thousand, which was the old amount, like two hundred and five thousand. But again, just to get an idea and a consensus of how many agencies, because I have to send communication out to all of them, so that they have time to get all their information together and back to us by the beginning of January. So the eight agencies that are in our policy to fund are the Community Rescue Service, Hagerstown Municipal Band, Hagerstown Neighborhood Development Partnership, or HNDP, the Maryland Symphony Orchestra, the Maryland Theater, Washington County Historical Society, Washington County Museum of Fine Arts, and the Washington County Free Library. Does any, is anybody really interested in changing the specific agencies that we have identified in, in our policy to fund going forwards?
Not me.
No.
Okay. So let's, let's leave those eight. And then as far as total dollars, right now, if we leave in the approximate amount that each one got, like fiscal year eighteen and nineteen, that would be about a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars we would need. Plus, we still have a final year to pay on the Maryland Theater additional pledge of a hundred thousand. So that number is two hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred dollars.
FY twenty-two, that's the last payment?
For the Maryland Theater portion.
Yeah, a hundred thousand.
And I did notate that before we made these extra obligation, our normal annual amount per the policy was two hundred and five thousand dollars. So are we good with two hundred and seventy-two? I think last year, what we did was, we said, it was hard to get to a specific number, so we said, come back in the range of the normal per the policy, which was the two hundred and five thousand to the two seventy-two, which includes leaving everybody as is pre-COVID a year ago, and including our additional obligation.
I mean, I'm the eternal pessimist, and, you know, I, I don't believe we're going to be completely free of COVID and FY twenty-two, but I don't see that we have any reason to plan other than business as usual until we, we know, is there a vaccine? Does it work? Or did it, you know, are, are we over, over this thing or not? But I, I think planning, planning the normal contribution makes sense, but just like this year, we're going to have to adjust.
And as we get further along, I mean, in January, any, any time before I came back, come back in February, we can have another conversation if more is known, it's different come January, you can provide additional guidance. Once I bring it in March, you always have the ability to make any changes as you see fit.
I think that's only logical right now, since everything's still up in the air.
Same.
I think it's impossible to give a clear direction.
And that's why I said I think that was going to be the easier, ironically, the easier part. It's very difficult. We have these policies in place, and we want to make sure that we're still continuing to abide by the deadlines, but knowing, it's very difficult to sit here with a crystal ball to say where anybody's going to be come then. So just gives me a way to know how to start to plan on this one area, and then, like I said, we can refine it. So for the harder question, so fiscal year twenty-one budget. We have talked and talked, the deficit in the general fund's still projecting about one point six million dollar deficit. We had originally approved our budget pre-COVID, and as part of that budget, agency contributions in the general fund were budgeted at two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred dollars. Of course, with everything that's happened, we've had a couple additional and subsequent conversations. And we were asked in July, we decided to wait until October. Hopefully have more information to see if businesses were reopened. And so the question today is, are we, are you prepared to give direction? Because I have been receiving communication from at least two of our agencies to inquire if we are going to fund them in fiscal year 21. And if so, when can they start to expect to see the dollars?
Who was that?
The Maryland Theater and CRS. So I just, I, so I'd like to be able to provide some information or guidance. I can always send a memo and we can say that you wish for me to come back again in a later time. But some of these agencies are really looking for a path forward for them too in the planning stages for the current.
I would note that the agencies listed on here have received approximately 2.2 million dollars in federal COVID and other grant funding. The city of Hagerstown has received zero. And the question is, are we going to do this funding through reserve funds when every one of these agencies have reserve funds and are relying on us to use ours to fund them for their current expenditures? I think clearly that tonight is premature to indicate to any of the agencies that they're getting any money. In the same respect, if we suddenly got an equivalent amount of federal funding the way they are, maybe we will have something. I'm not saying that we'll ever see the federal funding that we need for it. But I for one cannot see spending our reserve money to fund other agencies that have reserves. Um, and a lot of these agencies, I mean, I look at some of these and because of COVID, their, their expenditures had to be severely reduced while they look like they're getting grants substantially more than we ever conceived of giving them. And I don't see where, you know, a place like the library, just by way of example, doesn't make money because it's open unless I'm missing something. So I don't see how that negatively necessarily affected them. But I see they get 796,000 dollars in, in federal grants. And by the way, uh, having said that, I am an absolute, totally firm believer that no matter whatever happens, that the museum, that the municipal band, and the Maryland Theater are key integral parts of art and always need to be on there. But I just, I don't see today that we send them a message that we have any money at this time.
So yeah, I find it, uh, find it amazing that one of the lowest amount of, of dollars requested was the Hagerstown Municipal Band and that was for 18,000. They don't need it.
And they were, they were the lone agency that reached out. But so back in June, when I did reach back out to everybody and ask for all this additional information, and I have not followed up subsequently to say, have you received more? Did you receive all of these dollars? We do have a member here this evening from the Washington County Museum of Fine Arts. They are, they are very, very proactive about keeping me updated and letting me know what they are getting, what they are receiving. But again, I haven't reached back out to the others. Hagerstown Municipal Band said to go ahead and keep their entire 18,000 this year because they had to cancel all their events, but that they want it to be left and included in fiscal year 22. And since we're one of the lone funding sources.
Right. But I mean, I look at, and apparently we've already spent 112,500, correct?
Those were, so we had prior obligations and pledges and commitments, yes.
Right.
And so we had said, go ahead, because we had those obligations in place previously.
We're not obligated to the remaining items you have listed here, correct?
No, for fiscal year 21?
Correct.
Correct.
No, we budgeted, but we're not obligated.
Right.
And I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what your memo is saying. It's saying, you know, and, and I get that I'm just seeing sort of one, uh, uh, component of, of obviously a broader picture, that any one of these entities could paint. But I, I just want to make sure I'm reading this right. When you add this up, it's about 2 million dollars combined that these conglomeration of entities have received in outside, uh, uh, funding in addition to their regular funding of other operational components from, uh, COVID-related financial sources, uh, public dollars that they wouldn't have otherwise received, um, and that's above and beyond regular operations. I mean, I just look at that number and, and, uh, if that's correct. These aren't pending. These are, these are, these are figures that entities.
So, so most of them were information that they had. And if they, if, when they sent the information back, if anything was pending, I tried to put it in brackets at that time. So again, that was the end of June, beginning of July.
But the other stuff that's not, that doesn't say pending, you're saying that, that has actually been paid out?
Was actually money's awarded, yes.
I mean, it's, it's.
They're different.
It's real, it's real simple for me. I mean, I mean, my number is zero. It just is. Uh, I know that that doesn't make you popular, but I, I, I look at these numbers and I think there, I, I don't know how we could credibly look at our citizens and say, we're almost 2 million in the hole. These entities are about to give 200,000 dollars to, have gotten 10 million dollars, you know, in outside funding sources to help, uh, uh, you know, just as any other entity has. Certainly doesn't mean that next year I'm gonna go and say it's zero again. It just means I'm in the moment of the makings of the year as it exists for us right now. And, and we are, uh, much further behind and our citizens are much further behind than, than we have the capacity, uh, you know, uh, to easily make up.
Now, if, if, it's, again, huge IF, if a third stimulus bill was passed by the federal government and from numbers that we had seen, we could possibly receive, that'd be a different story. But at this point in time, there's no given that we're gonna get any help from the federal government. And I have to agree with Kristen. I look at these numbers, I'd be, I'd be interested to find out, uh, an update since you contacted them back in June or July of what they actually have received. Like, you know, you have this 10,000 pending for the Maryland Symphony Orchestra from the Rise Up. I'd be interested to see if they've received that or not. The same goes for, uh, the Washington County Historical Society.
Yeah, I just don't know what dent our 30,000 bucks, and I'm just gonna be real, real, real plain here. I don't know what our dent of 30,000 bucks to the library makes when, when, when they got 800,000 dollars. You know what I mean?
And weren't open.
Additional, yeah, I, I, I just have to look at that and say, okay, what does that mean to our budgetary stability? And what does that mean, you know, to their budgetary stability in terms of, uh, uh, the, the, the net, uh, uh, amounts that are being received to, to compensate for, you know, the impact of, of, of current events? Ours is zero, it's astronomical. Our little number doesn't begin to
Yeah.
have any measurable impact, you know?
Uh, to that. I concur.
And so the way, just as a reminder, typically, once the budget is approved, um, in May, I would send out letters to all the agencies to say, hey, our budget has been passed. This is the amount of funding you can expect for this, the next fiscal year. We did send out a memo and at that time we said, a budget has been passed. We are, we are still in the midst of making necessary adjustments. It is unknown at this point. That's what they've received. And then they received a request for additional information and then, um, in July that we were waiting to see into October. So there is no other obligation for fiscal year 21. And if we, if we wish to say we are looking at doing zero and I send that memo out and something happens in the city where to receive some other type of funding sources for revenue losses, we could certainly come back and make that decision later if that were to ever happen.
Yeah, I think.
If, if, if the need was truly there for them.
Correct. If that was the direction.
Yeah, right now I don't see anybody, um, that is looking like they're going to have to close the doors permanently, because we're not coming forth and saying we're going to give our full contribution. And, and we're not saying we're not gonna give any contribution. It's just that we don't know what impact this whole thing is really gonna have on the city. We haven't seen it yet and.
So you, you're a vote for just sending a memo to say, we're gonna wait, we still don't know for fiscal year 21.
We're not, we're not saying no, we're not saying yes. We're saying we need to take a look down the road and see what the, uh, what the implications for the overall city is, are.
And I don't know when we're ever gonna really know that, you know? I mean, where's the, where's the end, you know? Where's the end? But, you know, the, a decision, the unpopular decision is looking out for the best interest of the city. And that's what we're doing by, you know, not giving any donations at this point or any contributions at this point. So I agree with Kristen and Lou and basically everybody.
I want to make it clear, I'm not, I'm not on the same page as Lou and Austin. I'm, I'm not at, we'll, we'll look at it as we go.
No, I'm saying zero.
Yeah, you're.
I think we're all there, Kristen. I mean, I, I think.
I mean, if you just sent me a chart and said, nobody got anything through, through the stimulus package, I'd be like, yeah, well, we'll keep looking at it. I'm at like, we're not looking at it at all, we'll see you next year.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at zero. I'm with Kristen.
So that's, so that's two, because I heard Austin say, we're not telling them zero. We're saying we're gonna wait to reevaluate and come back and discuss it again.
Yeah, I'm at zero.
I, I, I have no problems. I, I think they're all the same answer, okay? So I have no problems if you tell them zero or if you tell them at this stage of the game, the council does not see any way that there's gonna be contributions this year. But I, cause I don't see it. When I say that you can look at it and see if the federal government gives us enough money to get us out of having to go into the reserve fund and a need is shown, that would be a different story. I think the chances of that happening are zero to none. And given the fact that I won't be here to make that determination, if I were making the decision today, I would agree with Kristen.
I'm fine, Doug.
There you go.
So I'll send a letter. I'll say that we anticipate no additional
Contributions this year.
For fiscal year 21, in the event that something were to change or something had changed with our financial projections, we would definitely be reaching back out.
And that they should contact the congressman in order to get federal funding. That'd be.
You know, and along those lines, with the only indication we've ever gotten that there was ever gonna be any state and local funds available is in this last iteration of, of the CARES Act that's held up. So it, it's a crapshoot right now whether, whether anything is gonna happen. And, and Lou's exactly right, that we're the only ones, really of the major industries have gotten nothing to help us in, in the deficits we're seeing.
It's like the federal government has decided that they've come up with a way to defund police.
True.
And I would make it clear in the letter, I mean, these are, these are, you know, close community partners. If there is a critical issue that arises, come to the body. You know what I mean? I mean, that we're never, ever going to look at any of these and say, ah, no, sorry, good luck. What we're saying as a whole is this particular item. But if you've got a critical matter that arises, uh, the Maryland Theater, the one year had the, the roof that was, you know, leaking and falling and that kind of stuff.
The museum.
Then I think you need to come to the city and the county and, and you need to say, hey, guys, we got this serious issue, you know, so.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. City administrator, any comments?
Uh, just one, uh, this will be the last weekend right, uh, right now that's planned for street closure, Saturday and Sunday for street dining. Hopefully the weather cooperates a little better. Uh, Saturday, 3 to 9, Sunday, 11:30 to 3:00. And then we'll evaluate towards the end of the month as, to see if we can do anything in November. But as of now, this would be the last weekend. That's it for me.
Mr. Osh.
Now, I just wanted to reiterate, um, uh, what a pleasure it's been, uh, going around these last couple of weeks. Door hanging, not door knocking, because, uh, don't want to interrupt people sanctity of their home, but, uh, door hanging and then people do come out and want to converse and everything else. But really how, how interested people are in the city in what's going on and wanting to talk and, uh, and, and find out what's going on and, you know, what your, your position is on things. And, uh, had, had some, uh, some really great conversations, but some unexpected ones too. And one of the ones that I, I think, once we get through this whole thing, maybe we need to talk about a little bit. In a couple of communities, uh, the, uh, the, the first thing, you know, when I, I handed somebody my campaign card, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm very pro, uh, the police department and, uh, and contributing funds and, and trying to get to full strength. But the, uh, uh, one, one person made the comment that, uh, you know, you're, you're a, I'm a two-time convicted felon, that guy over there is a convicted felon, that guy's a convicted felon. You're, this is a real interesting campaign position to bring down here. And we started talking about it. And, um, some of the, some of the problems that, uh, that I've seen people have, uh, that, in, in our job is what we've limited, uh, limited that we can do, uh, to give people a second chance. There aren't very many second chances out there. And, you know, we keep talking about ways, new ordinances and I, I keep talking about new ordinances and things to, uh, to try to reduce the whole drug trafficking industry. And unfortunately, we've got a lot of people coming back into the community after serving their time and they can't get a job. And if they do get a job, they, um, you know, very quickly are, are found out that they, uh, they omitted that little detail, um, even though they're doing a good job or whatever. And, uh, they, they, uh, end up having to go back into the trade because that's the only way they can make a living. So I think, um, you know, with all the other things that we're doing, uh, trying to make this a great place to live, I think if we, uh, could think about it, uh, between now and when COVID goes away, what kind of programs can we put in place to give people a second chance? And to, to kind of remove that stigma if they have, uh, if they have served their time? So that's my.
Michelle?
I just want to mention that, um, the next Washington County Recovers event is going to be held on August, I'm, I'm sorry, October 28th, which is a Wednesday, from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. It will be held at the USMH Plaza and in the Borough Box. So it's the Day of Access to Immediate Treatment. And the really good news with all of that is that not only is Washington County participating, again, this will be our fourth event, um, but we are also, we have, um, secured Frederick County is going to be doing it on the same day. Allegheny County is going to be doing it on the same day. And Garrett County is gonna be doing it on the same day. So it's just a nice blossoming event that is going to be able to provide treatment, access to individuals that are in need. So very proud of that.
And they're seeking treatment now.
And they're seeking treatment, that's correct.
Cool. Uh, I'm gonna make mine short, but I, the, uh, Public Safety Awards Ceremony is, uh, Thursday night at 8 o'clock. And, uh, we were fortunate enough to have quite a few people who were receiving awards this year. Uh, the Public Service, Distinguished Service Award is gonna be, uh, given to Chief Steve Warre of the Hagerstown Fire Department. Uh, the Lifetime Achievement Award, and I don't know if that's good or bad because it just shows you how long the person's been around and they're getting really old. Uh, that, but that goes to the individual, uh, award of dishonor and compasses leadership and an exceptional work ethic. He or she has consistently performed above and beyond normal expectations throughout their career. And he happens to be in this room right now, and that's Lieutenant Mark Renner. Congratulations, LT. We have some Medal of Valor recipients, uh, We have some Medal of Valor recipients, uh, the Silver Star and the Bronze Star, um, Gold Stars. And, uh, we have a silver medal will, uh, be given to Master Police Officer Ryan Works, Officer Joseph Williamson, uh, Master Police Officer John Mullino, Sergeant Douglas Hay, Master Police Officer Jason Batistic? Batistic? Yeah. Batistic, yeah.
Batistic.
Yes. Officer Andrew Maine, uh, Officer Joe Brady, and then the bronze to, uh, Master Police Officer Curtis Kelly. We have a Unit Achievement Award, and this is honor, uh, is awarded to any Bureau, Division, Section, Unit, or Squad exhibiting extraordinary performance, attention to duty, and for an outstanding contribution to the department or to the welfare of our citizens. And, uh, one of the winners is Truck Four from the Heggestown Fire Department. And that looks like that is it. But we, uh, we have many people who will be receiving awards, uh, because of their dedication to the citizens of Heggestown. And, uh, and we thank you and appreciate you very much, and congratulations. So, having said all that, uh, we're adjourned until next Tuesday.